Anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, you can transmit the meeting through any medium. Please let me know. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. I trust everybody has had an opportunity to read the minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes? Motion from Jen, second by Patrick, all in favor. Next. The next agenda is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does anybody have any announcements?
Want to recognize, we, last week we had the induction of the new National Honor Society group, as well as the graduation of National Honor Society for our seniors. So certainly want to congratulate all of the newest inductees into the National Honor Society. What a tremendous honor and how much work. I know that it is, having attended those in so many years in the past here, just never ceases to amaze me just how impressive those, the students are. Really all the effort and work that goes into that. So certainly congratulations to all the seniors on their way out. As I know they are anxiously counting down the minutes to the end of their school year here and their end of their time here in Milford Public Schools. And certainly congratulations to the juniors and the new inductees.
Anybody else?
Real quick if I could, Mr. Superintendent, I had the opportunity as, last evening with Joe Marias, to attend the hospitality management program at the Doubletree Hotel. And the only way I can describe it is over the top. Absolutely just impressed with our students. I was saying earlier to Kathy, every single one of them that I addressed, I addressed myself as, hi, I'm Mike Walsh. Every one of them came back and said, hi, Mr. Walsh, how are you? Just impressive, direct eye contact, their appearance, it was just really amazing to me in that every vendor that I spoke to, because at every table was an adult, you know, from the company that they represented. And every single one of them used words professionalism, you know, compassion, their appearance, their knowledge, their enthusiasm. And it was every single one of them. So, you know, I just, very, very proud to be a school committee member, attending that event last evening, and have people say those kind of things about our students. Just another example, you know, as I've always said, the great things to go on in the Milford Public Schools, last night was another example. So, thank you. We should be very proud of them.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I just wanted to announce also our, our school physician, Dr. Felix Periello. The Reliant Medical Group and Southboro Medical Group, this is a shout out to their top performers and patient experience results. And our school physician was recognized in the ninetieth percentile of patient experience excellence. So we're fortunate to have Dr. Periello as part of our team. His knowledge and experience is invaluable to our district. And I wanted to share that, Judy Deggins shared that with me today, and wanted to share that with the committee and with the public. So, yet another shout out.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Do the gifts.
We did that later on.
Okay. Next agenda item, invitation to speak. Anybody here to speak? Okay, the next agenda item, Woodland Element B School Family Handbook and School Improvement Plan. Good evening.
Good evening.
Work your way through the crowd.
Now, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Concilie has the record for being the shortest presenter of all the principals historically. I'm not setting you up that way, but this could be a record setting.
I've got the record for the shortest meeting, so, you're on.
No pressure.
I don't even know where to begin, honestly. First, I, I think, I just want to say how proud I am of, of, I am of the Woodland staff. It goes unrecognized, I think, to the general public, but what I see my staff doing every single day is tremendous. You know, that there's, people get there at six and they're probably still there if you drive by the parking lot. They work really, really, really hard. A lot of initiatives get pushed on them and, you know, without kickback, without anything, they, they take a deep breath and, and just try to manage. And I, I think, I hope kids don't realize how much actual pressure is on our teachers and, and staff. So, I'm proud of them, they work really hard. So, and, and it, it's gonna be increasingly difficult as we move this transition forward. They're gonna have that pressure of, of trying to think forward and then at the same time work with the students that are in front of them. So, I know they're up for the task and I know that they're gonna do it with a smile and probably nobody will even know that they've had all this extra work. So, I don't know, I'm happy for them and with them and happy to work, be working with Lisa. So, before I talk about school improvement plan, I'm gonna let Lisa talk about the handbook that she worked on.
Really, our student handbook this year has very minimal changes and I'm sure next year you will, will be in front of you with more changes as we're hopefully introducing another grade. So the only thing really, we did major, minor changes in terms of dates and names. And we also looked at our, our homework policy and really tried to incorporate the RTI model that we've been embedding into our system into the homework policy. So, really that were, that was the biggest change for us. We did add the tuberculosis statement that all the principals will be adding as well.
Anybody have any questions?
You know, Lisa, I was wondering how, how the RTI model is, is, is working. How is the, how's it been working with your staff? Have they been finding it challenging? Are they, what?
I think.
Just briefly speak about it.
I think this year, what we had done with the teachers is set up some common planning time where they could actually go through a model. So they're being trained through a series of videos and they're able to sit down as a staff and really talk about how can I take this strategy and implement it in my classroom. And what we've been finding is we definitely see a lot of different things happening in the classroom in terms of, you know, how they're reaching students. You know, the models that they're using, the, you know, it's not the traditional sit down and listen, they're working in groups. How are they taking the data to support their intervention? So we have a lot of discussion going on in these meetings and also taking that and looking at it and saying, how can I inform my instruction based on what the children are doing? Like how, how did they do on this exit slip? Do I need to pull a group aside tomorrow during intervention and really work with them on a certain concept and push the others to move forward? So it's really, I, I mean, I think it's been, been working, you know. I think it gradually worked into our system and now we're really trying to make it something that happens all the time where it's not a new concept for us. It's what we do every day.
Would you say it's, do your teachers feel empowered with the new policy? Do they feel like it's a positive force? I know that we had sort of some lumpy introductions, not, not in Woodland, but across the school district. And there was some stress on the uptake from some of our teachers and I'm wondering how, I've heard nothing but good things actually out of Woodland. And I'm just wondering if there was something different that you were doing there that...
Um, go ahead, go ahead. So, we've had, we participate in a lot of professional development around response to intervention. So currently, we have this video series through the RTI guy, his name is Pat Quinn. There's a twelve video session, we have the common planning time. So, teachers come together, talk, discuss the video and then walk away and try some of the strategies. We've really tried to work on, and what I think is the most important part of RTI is the tier one instruction, which is the classroom instruction. What's happening every day in front of the class. And then from there, we have the great breakout tier two intervention with our reading intervention teachers. So, I'm not gonna say it's not rocky at times, but I think they're, the teachers are collaborating and working together and the team model seems to be working. And that coupled with what's going on in our intervention seems to be moving kids forward. You know, to the best of their ability and within the confines of what Woodland school looks like now to the, um, just structurally. So, we do the best that we can with that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other member? Can I have a motion to accept the Woodland Elementary School Handbook?
With pleasure.
Scott, second by Patrick, all in favor. Nice job, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, moving on, I just want to recognize quickly. This is all, every day, all day. I just want to recognize our school council members. First, community member Leah Valenti, she was a, she's a parent at Stacy, I believe now. But she has been staying and stayed with us, she went away, her year, and then she came back and is kind of helping us know what's going on at Stacy. So to kind of bridge that gap, so she's been great. Our teacher representatives Tara Daverin, Adam Manning, Dan Onision, Kathy Peliquin, Kelly True, Eric Ventura, and Seth Wood. And then our parent representatives, Mike Anantonio, Giuseppe Di Giellinardo, Dave Ferrera, Secretary, Marsha Montgomery was a co-chair, Carolyn Periello, Lauren Webb, and Chris Wilson. So, we have quite a large council, but we were there once a month and worked together and I thought it went great. So, thanks to everybody on our council. All right, so, our biggest thing that we want to kind of work on next year, we broke our school improvement plan up into the four standards that the, the district plan is in. So we kind of aligned ourselves with the district plan. The first standard is curriculum planning and assessment. And we really, really want to work hard at, at creating electronic curriculum maps. Unfortunately, we had some, some news this week that, that put a little setback in that with, I think, I think Gate went away, which was the Edwin teaching and learning part of it, which we were using and, and kind of headed in that direction. But it's okay because we're ready to hit something else. So the teachers really, really are chomping at the bit and want to get on to the electronic curriculum mapping. So, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get some of it done by the, before the end of the year. And then really work on that for next year. And again, I, I also recognize, and I, I think sometimes when we develop school improvement plans, we have these high aspirations of, of really what we want to do. But then once we get into it, I, sometimes we have some setbacks and, and things get taken away. I think, I really think that we're underestimating the time that it's gonna take us to transition from the school we're in to the new school. And that, I really think is gonna take a lot of time next year, but we built it as if it's not gonna take a lot of time, but I think it's gonna. So, curriculum mapping is gonna be important. Continue to develop our enrichment program. We, we had a little bit of a shift this year. We went from two paraprofessionals to one teacher, which has been working out great. So we had a, a classroom teacher, Wendy Marino, take over that position. She really infused some STEM topics into it. And in fact, at the beginning, we had strong parameters for who should be taking enrichment. And then towards the end, we kind of morphed that into a STEM program for all students. And currently that's what we're doing now, we're, we're hitting some science and technology, but we're hitting every classroom. So she's taking each class, it's been working out great. So we're gonna explore next year, when we move into the new building, should we have that enrichment position? Or should we move more towards a special subject that's a science, technology, special subject that every kid's getting? And it's kind of helping the science aspect of, of elementary school, which sometimes, sometimes we don't get to go full force and because of all our other math and language arts initiatives. We need to provide opportunities for our staff to use the Understanding by Design Framework, or UBD. We have model curriculum units on the DESE website that we're gonna be using, but we want to create our own. It's not an easy task, they're really huge. So, I think that's gonna take a lot of time. Also, next year, we have to talk about, and maybe it's an administrative meeting, but it's probably collaborative, how we're gonna structure the administration. On paper, what we've put is that we're gonna have, there'll be two assistant principals or assistant to the principal, but two assistants. One will be a dean of students and then one will kind of have a role of curriculum instruction and assessment, which is really different than any other assistant principal in the district, I think, where a lot of time and effort is focused on students and student issues. We want to develop somebody that's just curriculum instruction and assessment and can really do the assistant principal stuff and kind of coach teachers in different directions. So, that's what we're probably gonna be headed towards, which again, I think is a little different and, and hopefully it'll work out. Moving on. Any questions about curriculum instruction and assessment? All right, teaching, oh, sorry.
As you're, as you're designing the role for the, the curriculum assistant principal, how are you partitioning out the different responsibilities between, or strike that. How are you partitioning out the different responsibility to the school than responsibility to central office in terms of building the curriculum and being comfortable with doing the mapping and moving forward that way?
Good question. I think, well, I think, I think the person is certainly gonna have, you know, definite ties to what Kevin's trying to do and we'll, we'll work hand in hand with, with Kevin. But I also see the person, you know, with my background in, in health, in phys ed, I can't, that's one of my weaknesses, I think, is trying to help lead, like, reading instruction and math instruction. I rely on people like Jess Lamar and Kelly True, who are really, really, really good at those things. And, and they're able to, to help coach teachers. But if I had, if we had somebody full time who, that was their job and they felt really comfortable at it and, and teachers felt like they had this person that could say, hey, come on in and, and watch me do this reading lesson or help me do this reading lesson, like, my scores aren't doing well, they're not where I think they should be, can you help me do that? They're doing it now with, with their colleagues, but it's not always easy with their colleagues because they're teaching class too. So, an administrator, I mean, they ask us to do things like help them with class management and things like that, but, but the reading, that's where I look and see. And then I think if you look at, at districts around, the higher performing districts, that's what they have. They have coaches that can come in and do model lessons or critique, so that's what we're looking for. Right? So, our teaching all students, we're looking to continue some of the curriculum committee work that we're doing and on, from Woodland. We have our data team, we hold monthly meetings, talk about data. We have a math committee that we've joined and, and we have, next year, we have purchased the materials for the new Everyday Math Four, which is coming out. But we're really gonna look at it and see, is that the right thing for us to be, be doing? So, we have a committee for that. And, and when we talk about committees and the committees that we created, all of our committees have somebody from every team. So we have three teams, in the third grade, three teams in the fourth grade. So we grab one teacher from each of those teams, bring them together. Now our committee starts with these six people, one from every team. And then when they go back, that's what they, that's what they bring back to their common planning time. It's some of the things that they talk about in these committees. We, we're working on the students, the standards-based report card, making sure that it's easily understood. Parents, when they, they get the standards-based report card, the, the goal, the end goal is for you not to have a question about where your, your child stands in terms of other third graders or what they should know when they finish third grade or what they finish fourth grade. So, we, we're really trying to, to fix that and make sure there's no question of where they need to be. A science committee, which we've already started to, to help the middle school and, and bring in the next generation science standards. And then our, our language arts and reading committee, which is kind of probably morph into a curriculum mapping committee and that's probably where we're gonna start with the English, language arts. And like I said, we're gonna start as soon as possible with that. We're gonna expand our PBIS program and really look at what tier two and tier three means. We have a, I think we have a great tier one program. You come into our school, you're gonna hear that Woodland students are safe, responsible, and respectful. That's the basic tier one level, but what happens when a kid, I don't know, for strays from the right course? So that, what do we do with those guys? So, we have things in place, but I think we could do a better job with it. We're gonna work at our team collaboration time, which is what we call, which is what we call common planning time, to make sure that we're talking about primarily curriculum instruction and assessment. So if we need some professional development in that, we're gonna get it, make sure that we're doing all the right things there. And again, vertical alignment is gonna be important and bringing the fifth grade down and, and I don't know how much we're gonna be able to do that during the, the course of a school year, but as much as we can, get the fifth grade down and, and start acclimating them to our third and fourth grade staff so that it's seamless when we move into this new building. We're gonna have to come up with a schedule that's going to work for third, fourth, and fifth grade. I've been thinking about it already and I, I think we, we have a plan to, to keep something very similar to what we have. I think we can make it work by bringing the fifth grade down. So, we'll just have to scratch it out and put it on paper. And try to keep everybody on the same bell schedule. I know that that sometimes is an issue at, at Stacy, we have kids moving at all different times. But you know, this school is, is going to be built in such a way that you can have all kids moving at all, at the same time. It's, it's gonna be built big enough for that. So, I think we're gonna have to work really hard to make sure it happens that way. And then, professional development, we're gonna expand our, we've been doing our Tuesday meetings, which are typically faculty meetings. We've been creating seminars, the, our teachers have been creating seminars for each other and, and we've been signing up and teachers have been leading other teachers in professional development. And we've been having, we've been, for the last few months, every Tuesday is a different seminar led by a different teacher. And contractually, you're only responsible to go for one of the Tuesdays, but majority of staff go to more than one. And some staff go to every single one, just to hear all the different things that everybody has to say. So, they've been really good. Community partnerships and relations, Ms. Kincaid has started Meet Your Neighbor Day. I don't know if you want us to say something about Meet Your Neighbor Day.
So it's, it basically is a May career day for our students and it will be held on June seventeenth. So we've been inviting, you know, some parents and community members to come and talk to the students. So, hopefully it'll give them like an idea of, you know, why am I here? What is this gonna lead to and what are the steps that I need to take there? So, that'll be happening soon.
Looking forward to it.
Me too.
All right. Also developing partnerships with Milford High School. This past, past spring, we had a, we had the vars, some of the varsity athletes over with, with Mr. Boucher. And they'd had a reading night, so the kids came and they got to hear different varsity athletes read to them, which was good. I think, I think moving forward, we're gonna, we're gonna, I, we're hoping for, we have grandiose ideas of having a lot of kids and a lot of different varsity athletes, so we're looking forward to that. But then, we started a partnership with the pathways program and, and getting the kids that are in the pathways program over to participate with our kids. And maybe, maybe we can, we, by partnering with them, maybe we could help them, you know, have a reason to come to school. So, you know, by just knowing that you have somebody that's relying on you to come and, and read them a story or work with them, I think that that could be really powerful for both us and them. So, we're looking forward to that. We've started to use things like, well, we have paper and we have the Blackboard Connect, but what we're finding with the Blackboard Connect is it's sending out emails. And, believe it or not, not everybody has emails, but they have Twitter and Facebook and all of those things. So, we started to explore how we could utilize those ways, those platforms and get more people involved. So, I don't know, it seems to be going okay. And then we really want to mirror kind of what Stacy's doing with their, their cultural program and, and come up with an opportunity for bilingual families to share their cultural diversity at our school. So, we just have to explore that a little, a little more. What's difficult is being in the center of town, Stacy, I think, a lot of people walk to those events, but for us, we don't really have the, the transportation to bring people from downtown to, to our school and a lot of people have to walk and it gets difficult. So, we have to try to think outside the box for that one. And then just continue our, our, our work with our PTO. Our PTO is tremendous. The parents, Kim Sexton this year is our, our president, but they, they're so supportive, it's ridiculous. And, and the generosity that our parents show, our parents, I mean, our, our teachers are so appreciative of, of just the time that our, our parents spend, it's, it's great. So, thanks to, thanks to them too. And then finally, just our PLCs, we, we talked about it in, in our community, our committee work. It gets hard because people want to be on, on multiple committees, it just isn't the time for it. So, it's just spreading everybody out and making sure everybody's where they are to, to make positive contributions is all. That's us in a nutshell. And then of course, we have the big dig going on. On our property.
Scott?
First of all, thank you guys so much for coming forward. You certainly have a lot of programs. One of the things that I heard is a theme throughout, as both of you were presenting, is just how engaged your staff is and how much you guys really engage the whole team. And, you know, we hear a lot about school districts and, and about, you know, how much extra is being put on teachers. You know, I think it's, I have an opportunity to interact with a lot of the teachers that work in your school on a fairly regular basis through parents and, and sports and things. I don't think I've ever heard from any teacher in your, in your building, anything but excitement and energy around participating and just constantly looking, they're actually looking for more things to do, to engage and continue to move forward. That's just, it's, it's very impressive to see. It's awesome and certainly speaks to the talent of the teachers that we have worked in our district. And I think it also speaks to your leadership and the engagement that you have with your team. So kudos to both of you guys for that and certainly keep up the great work that's there. You've, you've got a, you do have the big dig right next to you, right? Said earlier, you make, we're making a real big mess of your parking lot over there.
Well.
And investing in the future. What I would tell you is, is, I mean, I've seen probably half your teaching population in the last two weeks here, just through different events. You wouldn't know that there was a building going up in the, in the building next to them, because they don't talk about it. They're just like, no, we're really excited, but they're really focused on what's going on.
It's surprisingly minimally disruptive.
And it should, it could very easily have been a huge distraction and it really thus far has been a fairly non-event from a distraction perspective, which is awesome.
As long as the trucks move forward and not backwards, that's the only time. When they back up, it's a little bit of a problem, but if they just keep moving forward, we're all right.
Yeah, we need them to keep, keep moving forward a lot over the next several months. But, no, that, that was really it. And then also, you know, if you, my other ask was enough, so I was just confirming what Jen is, is with this being teacher appreciation week, please pass along our, our appreciation and thanks to all of your teachers as well as to all the teachers here in the town of Milford.
Absolutely.
Any other member? Jen?
Um, I wanted to just echo a little bit on what Scott just said. It's kind of the way you started tonight and talking about your teachers first. I mean, to me, that is just the epitome of Woodland and it's the way that you two interact, as Scott said, as leaders. And this whole plan is full of that and it's full of ideas and creativity and all within the, the confines of those four big standards that we all have to work within. And there are so many exciting initiatives in this and yet you still find a way to engage teachers and bring them in at times when they don't have to be there. You, you never go to an event at Woodland where it's just not full and overflowing with teachers who are there on their own. And so everything that's in here, all the things you just said about committees and all of that, it's, that really is, it, that gets lived out all the time at Woodland.
Thank you.
So, even the newsletter that comes home from Woodland and there's always a message and there's always something so positive. And I just know as an elementary parent, you know, you want to know first and foremost that your child is welcomed. Never mind the great education that we expect. And you've been doing it in a building that is far, you know, completely subpar in terms of what you have to do. But people still find a way to use all these current things that we're supposed to be doing and you're still making it work. So, thank you for that. It's a really rich plan and I think you've got a lot of great things going on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, it, it was very kind of you to open your...
If I may, it, it was very kind of you to open your presentation with those kind words of your staff. You know, that doesn't happen a lot, but to the both of you, I say, there's an old saying, the speed of the leader is the speed of the team. And it's very evident, you know, at the Woodland School, it's very evident in all of our schools, but, you know, you've, you've got a, you know, Scott said, and you said the big dig, you got a huge obstacle up there and you still have to educate children, you know? And you're, you're both, you're doing a great job and please just keep up the good work. Anything we can do to help, don't hesitate to give us a call.
Thanks.
And with that, go ahead.
Also wanna comment, Craig and Lisa, excellent job, but the, the connectivity that you have of bridging pathways, for example, at the high school with students, and, and that would really resonate with me, Craig, that point about giving this sort of meaning for these kids to wanna come to school, kids who are probably our least motivated students in the district, but finding a way to make it, that's really out of the box thinking that I love and that connectivity, uh, with the student athletes at the high school, with the younger students and then bringing fifth grade and engaging them with Woodland School that you've done now, and I see a lot of that happening with Nancy reaching out to the hospitality program to bring that down, middle school athletics expanding and more and more I see something that's like this cycle of where every school is reciprocal of the other and that's really exciting from my seat here, certainly from the school committee's perspective, so. And you've been a trendsetter in many respects in doing that work, so thanks, just a job well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have a motion to accept the Woodland name. Scott, second by Joe, all in favor? Great job. Thank you very much for coming.
Have a good night.
Keep up the good work. Your shoes look like you've been on a construction site. I won't tell. Okay, next agenda item is reported, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
Thank you, I have for the committee's approval, two warrants this evening. The first warrant is in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents.
And I have a motion from Joe, second from Scott, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion from Jen, second from John, all in favor?
I also have a request for professional development approval in the amount of four thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars.
Motion from Patrick, second from Joe, all in favor?
And lastly, I do have a personnel update of the latest appointments hired from our last meeting. And there is a out-of-state field trip approval request from the seventh grade team to attend the Roger Williams Zoo. There will be a hundred students attending on June third. And this out-of-state field trip does require a, a vote of approval from the school committee.
Motion from Patrick, second from Scott, all in favor?
I love that zoo. Such a wonderful zoo. You have to go through Windsocket, I guess, on the way, so that's a good thing, that's cultural in and of itself.
I drive by it about three days a week.
Tonight we have gifts, love gifts.
We love gifts.
So, the first, yeah, gift is from the Santiago family, for the Milford family in Community Network. Uh, the purpose of it is programs, events, and playgrounds. The second one is, and I apologize for this, uh, the Munster family. Again, Milford family and Community Network, programs, events, and playgroups. And the last one is James and Michelle Hennaberry, again, family and Community Network, programs, events, and playgrounds. I'm sorry, the Hennaberry's is for a hundred, the Munsters' is for fifty, and the Santiago's is for fifty, very generous. And I have a motion to accept the gifts, Scott, second by Jen, all in favor? The next agenda item is subcommittees and the first one is policy.
We haven't met since our last meeting.
Uh, next one is wellness, which is mine and we did meet yesterday and, uh, Bob was there with me, it was a great meeting.
It was, last meeting of the year.
Yeah, some of the things that, uh, we talked about was, uh, the success of Healthy Kids Week, uh, was a huge success and actually what we're gonna do is, they have some footage of, um, Friday, all day. We're gonna bring it in and we're gonna put it on our, yeah, we were gonna do it tonight, but Bob and I discussed and said it was a little too fast 'cause we wanna put a little program together, like the cheerleaders, so that everybody can see it. One of the things we talked about was the person that came to give the awards away was the former Patriot, Joe Wembrouzy.
Joe Wembrouzy, yeah.
And he was so, th- this is amazing to me is that he came and everybody forgot to tell security why he was coming. So, he comes in the front door, gets into the vestibule, identifies who he is and what, and she said, well, I'm very sorry, I, I can't let you go. And so, they text, they had to text Meg down in the field and she realizes she forgot to, to tell anybody that he was here. She said, I came up and here was this monstrous man trapped inside, but he got with the superintendent and he said, I have to commend you, 'cause they were very apologetic to him, he said, no, I have to commend you that your security is that tight that they would think about it, you know? Somebody, I can identify myself as an ex-Patriot player, some people say, oh, I, you know, but he said they didn't. They said, I'm very sorry, until somebody comes here to get you, we're not letting you in the Milford Public Schools. So, that worked out, that was great.
That's good, that's exactly what we want.
Yeah, 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 and he commended us for it.
He is a big boy though.
When I apologized and I looked up to him. You're, you're right, he was, he was very appreciative of the security of the school, but.
Um, we talked about the new Wellness Center, I don't know if everybody's been able to see the new Wellness Center. Again, over the top, it's just, you know, great to have it in, in, in Milford. We talked about the, uh, the garden, the school garden, which is, uh, coming right along. What's really interesting to me too is on the committee is a representative from Milford Hospital and just, uh, some of the programs, uh, through Milford Hospital, through the JAG, Amy Leoni, that they talk about and that they offer for our students. One of the disappointing things that they did talk about was they, the district attorney had a meeting for, was it thirteen communities, Bob?
For the, the
One at the police station, the other, yeah.
Yes, thirteen communities.
And three parents?
Yeah, that was the one, that was the meeting we had, school, the social host liability training we had here and of thirteen communities, only three families, three Milford families showed.
Right, so these programs are available to these people, but yet they're not taking advantage of them. But, um, we talked about Dr. Periello's, uh, school start, uh, time for adolescents and we did find out that there are three towns that are looking at it, or there's two presently right now, maybe one more coming on that are actually possibly looking at it and figuring out a way of how to put it together. So, that was, that was great and then basically, we talked about summertime, sun safety and, uh, the, the, the big discussion of the day was Mrs. Dagnes would like to have an unplugged day where we all turn off our iPhones and our iPads and our
Me too.
There was an awful lot of anxiety in the room. So.
We're trying to figure out how to run school if we all unplugged, but we'll figure that out.
But anyway, it was, it, it was a great meeting, as, as Bob said, it was our last meeting of the year. Gear up again in September, but it's just, um, it's amazing to me that when you bring that many people together from, you know, from, you know, collar, uh, food service, from, you know, Peter Boucher, the athletic director, from gym teachers, people from the hospital, school committee superintendent, the school nurses, it's really just, uh, it's amazing what, what you can get accomplished and, and the conversation and dialogue that you can have, so. That's, uh, that's what happened at the Wellness Committee and to Mrs. Dagnes, I wanna publicly say, great job. Middle School East reuse.
Yes, so we had a meeting, uh, last night and, uh, we are moving, continuing to move forward here. Really where we are in the process right now is, so we've really, um, identified that there's really two bodies of work that need to start to take place. The first body of work is, um, to contact and contract, um, a commercial, a commercial real estate professional who's gonna come in and do an assessment of the building, give us an understanding of what the marketplace supports, what type of needs there may be in the marketplace, um, both for state municipal and as well as commercial use, get an understanding of what the evaluation and the assessment from a value perspective and what potentially it might be out there for a need. So, that's one leg, the other leg of work and the other body of work that will be done was, um, following the real estate assessment is having an architect come in and then seeing what would need to be done for retrofitting based on some of these, um, some of these processes, some of the things that the real estate assessment comes back with for potential opportunities. And then what the, what the, what that would take, um, from a cost from an infrastructure. So, that's really the, the, the next two pieces, then those will come back together. They'll present before the full board, um, of, of the Middle School East Subcommittee and we'll start to make some recommendations and pull together some additional information from there. We've created some additional subcommittees that kinda go along with that. Um, I'll actually be participating as part of the real estate assessment group, um, and working with myself as well as, uh, Mark Shane, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Mark works obviously in the real estate firm, in, in the real estate firm and I'll be using, uh, some of my banking background and commercial lending background to work with the real estate group, so. More to come, but, uh, there's some more work that's gonna be done. We're, you know, really starting to take some, see some steps that are coming forward here. We were originally trying to work with Mass Development, um, something that Selectman Murray had brought up and asked us to really examine, um, the, I will tell you, unfortunately, it was not, uh, not full truth and advertising from the Mass Development Group, it's sometimes, it's sometimes presented as though this would be a free or no-cost option. Uh, what it really is, is a reduced cost upfront and a zero, and a no-interest loan and then they hope that you have, you then have to contract them to do whatever you're going to do, whatever they recommend. They then come in and do the work for whatever they just recommended and you have to pay them back. Uh, the cost was about eighty thousand dollars. Uh, we have forty. That's allotted to us and just that piece, they wanted, their charge was about eighty thousand dollars, so. Yeah, a little short, um, and, and not, and it was a, the plan was not, you, in some cases, it went way too deep for what we were looking to do and in some cases, it was way too shallow. And every time we asked them to change something, they said, sure, we'll just charge extra for that. Thank you for coming in, so we decided to move on from that group and, and go a different direction. So, that's where we are right now, uh, more to come.
Thank you very much, thank you, technology?
Uh, no update yet, Mr. Chair, we have our first meeting, uh, next Wednesday, May thirteenth.
Thank you. Next agenda item is school liaison updates, I would say, nobody's had an opportunity to get into their schools yet. Next, uh, agenda item is future agenda items, does anybody have anything they'd like to have added to a future agenda?
No, the only thing I would ask is, um, I know typically right around this time of year, if you can just check in with Jen Walsh, I've been seeing some stuff around the special athletes, um, starting to do some competitions and it's usually right around this time of year that we have them come in. If we can just check in
Yeah, absolutely.
And make sure that we, we get them on our future agenda to have them, have the special athletes come in for recognition.
What we've been doing for that in the last couple of years, may recall each, because we had only recognized one particular sport, basketball. We've made that change of having some committee actually attend their event.
Just make sure that we've not, not seen anything on that, if we can just make sure we get that out and get some updates on that, that'd be great. Just wanna make sure we continue to support that group.
Anybody have any old business? Patrick?
So, three meetings ago, I think, Paul came in with Wally and they gave us a, a great presentation. And at that presentation, um, John had asked for a revised price with Cat 5E cable. I had asked for a revised price, reusing some of the technology that fits their plan, honestly, which Worldband told us it does. I don't expect it now, I mean, I want it correct, I want it right, I just wanna make sure it doesn't fall off the map 'cause I think that's a, a pretty important thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a, I, I, at least personally, I'm, I'm sure Joe does too, I know he does, just not specifically what, have a number of questions that I wanna direct to Paul, um, to, uh, to Paul, some to Worldband, some to Wally, in terms of the mapping, I, you know, I, I know that Wally was awarded the contract to map the system, um, I haven't seen the mapping, I saw, uh, I don't know if it exists, but I, I saw the proposal for all the, you know, basically start from scratch and replace everything. I didn't see any of the adjustments for reusing things, um, you know, what I would expect from, from a mapping would be, you know, the physical components, what's in place, the switching, um, what's, what's in place for existing access points. I have, I have too long of a laundry list of questions that I wanna begin addressing. I don't expect it to be, you know, answered quickly, but, um, you know, I didn't wanna throw any of those out now. I thought we'd wait till our, you know, at least our first subcommittee meeting.
Any other member? There is no executive session this evening, as you know, so can I have a motion for adjournment? Joe? Second from Pat, all in favor? Good night and thank you.